Mr. Steigel.
Here.
Mr. Arcurry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Burquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Raise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business is approval of minutes from the previous council meeting of May 26.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports.
We want to bring you up to date. Here we are with regard to the sanctions response to COVID-19. As everyone is aware, we have moved to the green stage. One of the things that I would like to point out to council, you know, the, I believe, the library of all the institutions in town is one of the most cherished, and one of the reasons why I think it is is the commitment the employees in that library have to servicing the community. So even though the library has been closed, that doesn't mean they haven't been busy. And this report that was prepared by Mrs. Olenick illustrates some of the things that they have been doing. So one of the, one of the things that they have begun is to provide curbside service, and that has been exceedingly well received. In fact, they believe that when the library opens up, because there's a number of people who just aren't comfortable coming into spaces, that they're going to continue that service for a while and be able to take things out to people's cars and be able to exchange books without really having contact. The intention is, though, to begin to open up the library, and their preference is to do that on a major basis. So the intention is that they're going to open up a lobby, have people come in, be able to pick up books and things like that, slowly material, and they want to open up throughout the building. One of the concerns is under what conditions people enter the building. The state library has provided directions that masks are required, just as you would wear a mask into a commercial business. Our approach is going to be to post signs strongly, so the employees intend to wear masks, and they're going to ask that those who enter the building and service also be wearing them. So from that perspective, we're going to be there in the next couple of weeks, hopefully in a normal situation. Now, one of the things that you recall, although indicated that they were willing to experiment with waiving fines particularly inside the children's library for the summer. As a practical matter, there's no way to collect those fines when they're out servicing people at their cars, so they have not up to this point, and I would think probably for the remainder of the summer be collecting fines. It doesn't mean that they won't be collecting fees for lost items or items that haven't been returned, but I think collecting fines right now doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So in terms of the park and rec, all of the park facilities are now open, restrooms are open, there's an additional effort, they clean them more frequently than what we would normally. The ball fields are open, girl softball and Little League baseball has started. They have done so under guidelines that they've developed, that we have reviewed, for how to interact with the youth athletes and to do that in a way that we believe is safe. So as of last weekend, little league baseball and girl softball is taking place out there. As I said, all the facilities are open, so the playgrounds are now open, Field Five is open, and we are scheduling techniques in shelters. At the last meeting, we talked about the possibility, was there a possibility that we could find a way to do concerts in the park and do them safely? And I give Michelle a lot of credit, she hunted around, and I think she's found out a very clever way to go about doing this. And so what the intention is, is that we will lay down, probably with paint or something, a group of circles, and so that'll create areas with separation between them, and we'll fill that, the audience area up with that, and that way we can accommodate everyone and at the same time keep them spaced out. You know, the limitation right now is that there not be more than 250 people. Some of the concerts last year actually had attendance that exceeded that, but I think Michelle and I are both of the opinion that there may be a lot of people who might have attended last year that won't be there, so I'm not sure that the 250 limitation is going to be a problem. We're going to pay attention to it, and if it is, we'll address it later. In addition to the concerts, the intention is to go ahead with the movies in the park. Again, we're going to use that same method to keep people separated and safe. So this building, everybody, just about everyone is back. Next week, on Monday, we're going to open the building up to the public. We are going, at the same time, one of the things that we've discovered through this whole process is that we can do a lot of things without people entering our space, and we're going to continue to encourage people to do that, to drop off materials and pick up materials at a designated location. We have been meeting with the public, and we've been doing that, actually in this room. So we've got a set of tables that we use for that, and we're going to continue to do that kind of thing. So if you have any questions about that, if not, I don't know whether.
Just a question. Mr. Lauer, just a question about the sports associations. It seems like they've done a nice job putting guidelines together. Are we going to have signage also at the fields? You mentioned signage at the library.
There's going to be signage, and some of it's already up. There's going to be signage, like for baseball, in the dugouts, at the concession stands, and in the restrooms, suggesting, you know, distancing and washing hands and things like that.
I had one question about the state of emergency, or emergency declaration that we passed a couple of months back. Does that have a termination date on it?
We did not. Yeah, we didn't put a termination date on ours, and, you know, what you see is municipalities who have done that, they're bringing these back over and over again. So at some point in time, when we decide we can just terminate that emergency. Like I said before, it really hasn't caused us to do anything different, and where we've had some minor expenditures in relation to the pandemic, this hasn't been, as it is for, like, the city of Pittsburgh or Allegheny County, a major change in our expenditures.
One other question. Given that the school buildings are still closed, what's happening with the studio?
The studio is accessible and open. In fact, I was just talking to Ryan tonight, they're going to be reaching out to the volunteer producers and see whether or not people are interested in doing that. One of the things Ryan has committed to doing is that, just as, you know, the baseball association has done, is to come up with a set of guidelines so that people understand how we're going to go about doing that and try to do it safely.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief.
We're now starting to see supplies become more readily available, to a point, and we've also seen the price point come down to a point that's more reasonable than it was in March or April. We continue to procure these supplies through our normal process, and at this point, our resource requests through the county and the region have almost been completed. We're working with local hospitals for COVID results of patients that we've had contact with. It's now become part of a law that if a patient tests positive for COVID-19, they're required to notify the emergency response agencies that their responders may have been in contact with that. What that means for us really doesn't change anything, because we're going into these calls with our proper PPE or N95 masks, our gloves, face shields, things like that. And as long as we're staying careful, we're taking the proper precautions, we shouldn't have any issues as far as that goes. The high school is going to have graduation. We just had a virtual meeting with their officials today, earlier today, and on June 20th, they're going to have graduation, they're going to break it down into groups. They're going to have four groups of 80 students each. Each student will get a maximum of two guests. We're expecting about 240 people per group. They're going to do it four times, once at 9:00, 11:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m. on June 20th. We're going to go through our normal processes for emergency management. We've been heavily involved in graduation over the last couple of years. This one's a little different, because the groups are smaller, but the event's a lot longer. During the day, there's going to be more significant heat, so we kind of expect a couple emergencies as far as that goes. And if COVID-19 wasn't enough, we have protests in the area and things like that, which have all ended peacefully. They were very responsible in how they've handled it with their local governments as well. Our emergency management agency was involved with a couple of those, mostly the one in Washington, in which ended peacefully also. We returned its service on Saturday. With that, if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Chief.
Mike, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
As they are continuing to increase the testing that people are getting, and in fact, I'm understanding that people are actually getting tests and finding the fella, that they've, they are now immune to COVID by way of, nobody's quite certain, they never really had any symptoms or whatever. Is there an obligation on them to tell anybody that that has been their result?
So interestingly enough, we've actually had a couple instances with coworkers or people that we're close to in our agency. One of our cases happened up north, where one of our employees, his stepson, was directly exposed to somebody that had a positive COVID-19 test. What the State Department of Health did was made that person write down all of their direct contacts within 48 hours, and they were contacted by the State Department of Health. One of them happened to be a state employee who was contacted at work and was sent home from work and told to acquire a test or be off for 14 days. As far as the antibody testing that they're doing, coming back to the case up north, our employee wasn't directly exposed to that person, but his stepson was. They were able to procure an asymptomatic test through a medical, an outpatient care facility in the area and had his results back within 48 hours. There's some hearsay whether the asymptomatic testing is covered by insurance, not covered by insurance, but because they were direct exposure, they were able to get that procured.
Well, the blood bank has now included that with anybody that's making.
Have they really?
Donations, yeah.
For the antibodies test also. So interestingly enough, I just covered back today, and it's all rumor, I haven't seen any paperwork, but one of our employees has antibody positive test, which means he had had it, he was ill back in January, away from all of us, fortunately, he took time off, but recently just found that out around about 6 o'clock today. He called and said he was tested for antibodies and they came back. So is it changing things? I think so. Tests have become more readily available, Mr. Lauer and I have discussed that multiple times, and it's really changed how we can approach our employees, instead of being off for 14 days, have them get a test and then come back after the negative result. That answer your question?
Sort of. I mean, it's all in flux, I think, but.
It didn't sound like it answered your question, because I think what I took from your question, so if I got a test and found that I had antibodies, should I tell somebody?
I don't think so. No.
Okay, so that's.
No, as of now, the state doesn't say you have a responsibility to tell them. It's kind of like, hey, guess what? And.
But they're going to be quick to ask you for plasma donations.
Probably.
Probably. Yeah, probably.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing that I forgot was, we have made arrangements for a week from Wednesday for the tennis pump to come down, which means that that following Monday, I would think the tennis center would be in a position to be open again.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing our practice of regarding live audience comments, we are suspending those for the time being because of the stay-at-home order. Public comments can be emailed to township. If we have any of them, they will be read prior to the meeting, it'll be read at the meeting and responded to as appropriate. Do we have any, Mr. Lauer?
We have none.
We have no comments.
I just reiterate that I think that's, I would prefer that we didn't do it that way. I think people should be allowed to comment.
Okay, unfinished business, there is none. New business, the first item is approval of the Sugarbrook plan, shown on drawings prepared by Victor Wetzel and Associates dated May 29th.
So Galway Land Partners currently has a contract for approximately 28 acres of land at the intersection of Brookwood Road and Sugar Camp Road with the intention to develop any 33 lot residential subdivision. The entrance is off of Sugar Camp at that intersection with Brookwood, and the development includes three roads, two of which are individual loops within the development, the third is a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of the development. The idea behind that cul-de-sac is that eventually.
To Murray Drive.
You'll be able to connect to Murray Drive, so there's a provision for that. The other thing about this is that, as we had discussed previously, the intersection of Brookwood and Sugar Camp Road is identified in our traffic impact program as needing eventually an intersection improvement. What was shown in the original drawing was a roundabout, but that is not the only solution that is possible there. We sat down with Mr. Mudry to look at this, and he believes that at some point in time, what probably makes more sense at that intersection is turning lanes. So one of the things that the developer was asked to do was to dedicate additional right-of-way so that, in fact, you could accommodate those turning lanes. But the other thing that, when Mr. Zook and I sat down and looked at this, that we suggested is that rather than to have this, these two parcels identified as open space, that we would take these as fee simple, thus giving the township the ability at some later date, if we needed to do additional land to be able to do an intersection improvement, we could do that. If, in fact, these became open space, that would become an impossibility, because everyone in this plan would have a right to object to that and stop us from being able to do it. So what we're going to do is create easements and an obligation for the homeowners association to maintain the landscaping on this as though they would if it was open space, but at the same time reserve the right at some future date to be able to use that parcel to do improvements along Sugar Camp Road. The other thing that's in the plan and the conditions talk to this is that there is shown a connection onto Arrowhead Trail. But as you can see down here, this is the property line for the property. They do not own this portion. We're working with this adjacent property owner to see whether or not this is possible. I think it would be prudent, and I think the developer is prepared to do, is to, even if we can't get this right now, to make this improvement, to be able to provide for the trail.
I'm really concerned that if there was that connection, that people from outside of that community would park in there and then utilize the trail? And if not, I mean, why do you address that?
Now, we have other connections to the trail that run through the plant, so we've not seen that, so.
I'll just start with that.
And these are, the plan itself calls for two different styles of homes. There are patio homes, like, are shown over here, and then there are what you would see as a kind of a standard single-family home, so. Steve Victor is here. Anything you want to add? The records.
Steve Victor or Victor Wetzel Associates? No, I don't have anything to add. I think Paul said it all, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Why do the roads, are they 24 feet or 20 feet? 20? Make sure that you guys know that. Make sure everybody knows that.
We had a little discussion about that in another.
Yeah, we had a little discussion about that, where they put 24 in for, or they.
You said that the sidewalks are five foot.
Yes.
Will that be concrete five feet, or is it four feet and a grass buffer?
No, no, the sidewalks are five feet of concrete.
The standard, ADA standard now is five foot for sidewalks.
But we just approved four foot somewhere else.
Could be.
In the Juniper Woods.
Yeah, well, I can tell you the standard now is five foot.
Juniper Woods are five feet.
They're all five feet.
Okay, I'll go for mine.
Oh, no, you know what, it's the distance, no, what it was, was the grass strip was changed. That's what it is. Grass strip was changed down to three feet, and that's, yeah, that's what that was.
I have a question.
No, go ahead.
So you show 90 feet, 75 feet, and then the villas, however wide they are, which I presume is the width of the house?
Yes.
So when I was looking at some of the plan, it looks like there are certain lots that won't accommodate certain houses, so is the developer going to manage that? Like, there are some, for example, there's one that's 108 feet, so if you wanted to put a 90-foot house on that, you don't have enough for your side variances.
Correct. Lots one through 19, at the entrance area, the circle, the initial loop, Vista Drive, will be the villas. Those are the senior-friendly, first-floor living, first-floor master bedroom. Lots 20 to 33, those 13 lots, will be the more traditional single-family, and most of the lots can accommodate the larger homes. Yes.
And the reason I ask is that we've set the, we've reduced the setbacks, and it would be inappropriate, in my opinion, for people to start coming in for variances to build a house that would go into them. So that's just my question.
We will control that. We don't, we will not be building anything that requires a variance.
Good. And then the street names, can someone explain about the street names? Because there was some comment about they weren't approved. Can you just refer to Vista Drive?
The original application had street names that conflicted with 9/11, the postmaster. So they were renamed and found to meet the requirements of not being in conflict. So the first street coming in off of Sugar Camp, which is the Loop, is now Vista, and the one coming for the single-family area, I think that's Pras.
That's.
Piedmont?
Piedmont, Piedmont, thank you.
So those are the legitimate names?
Yes, they are now.
And one last thing, Mr. Lauer, you said, you know, we're going to look at possibly widening Sugar Camp?
Yeah, well, we're, the traffic improvement program, its capital project plan calls for intersections improvement in Brookwood, and I think we're all of the opinion that that's not needed right now, but we don't want to preclude that.
Yeah, I think what the staff has recommended, that you, the township, take ownership of Parcels One and Two, but that the homeowners association take on the landscape for that. It's sort of like, you know, I have to maintain the sidewalk in front of my house, and I have to mow that 10-foot strip in front of my house along the street. It's sort of the same thing, but if the municipality ever wanted to come in and do something, and that's what I think your staff has looked at, this is an area earmarked for traffic improvements or anything else improvements, you know, 10 years or 50 years from now, and this is, I think this is a prudent way to handle it.
Okay, it's a very legitimate concern. Okay, anything else?
Well, there were, the planning commission looked at this and recommended its approval and had 24 conditions, half of which have not been met, there are a few that are also pending. My recommendation that there be a couple additional conditions. The one I think is the drawing should be revised to show a street light to be installed at the intersection of Brookwood and Vista Drive and Sugar Camp Road, and I know the developer has a concern about what that light looks like. We can determine that at some future date, but there needs to be a street light that illuminates that intersection.
I thought we had it, I thought we looked at it. If it's not there, it was an oversight.
Okay, because there was a street light shown on the interior, but not at the road. The other thing is that I think we need to have a note placed on the plan indicating that Piedmont Drive in the future will be extended. There are some outstanding fees, as often is the case when we're looking at these plans. My suggestion is we should condition upon those fees being brought up to date, so.
Two other things, you mentioned the street light. I don't see a monument for the entrance for the plan. Will there be monument signs for the plan?
Ultimately, yes. We just haven't worked through that design yet.
Okay, and then the cluster mailboxes, there was some issue about that, has that been resolved?
It's still in the hands of the DeNisha Postmaster. Not a final decision from them yet, but we think that where they're showing the cluster mailbox, we'll be okay with the DeNisha postmark.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the Sugarbrook preliminary plan as shown on drawings prepared by Victor Wetzel Associates dated May 29th, 2020, for Galway Land Partners LP, subject to the recommendations and conditions imposed by the planning commission, as well as the conditions that were reiterated or raised by Mr. Lauer with regard to the street light and that the future potential that Piedmont Drive would be extended, as well as making revisions to Parcels One and Two to comport with the discussions about that being deeded to, or is that already there?
That's already there.
Okay, so no, I don't need to do that.
Second.
I can't see that form, my eyes weren't there. So that's it.
We'll be seconded. Anything else? Yeah, other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item is authorize chairman of council to submit a letter of support for proposed legislative change to advertising requirements.
So moved.
Okay, other discussion?
Just, should we copy Representative Ordete on that?
I didn't hear you, Mrs. Merrill.
Should we, C.C., send a copy of.
Can you talk into the mic?
Representative Ordete. Should we copy Representative Ordete so that he knows where.
We always do, yeah.
What wasn't on the letter, so that's why I asked.
All right, move the seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'm going to abstain, because I'm editor of the Washington County Legal Journal.
Okay, recognizing your writing talents there. Set a date for a public hearing for ordinance proposing changes to the zoning ordinance that impact fees.
Can we, before the pandemic, we were all set to have a public hearing with regard to changes to the zoning ordinance and the fee ordinance. We put that off, given that we had pretty much closed down the room for people to come in. Quite frankly, I do not anticipate that there is going to be a lot of interest in this, so I would like to be able to move ahead with that and schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting.
Move we schedule a public hearing for Monday, June 22nd, 2020.
Second. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I review the accounts payable and payroll report and move that they be approved as submitted.
I'll second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence, seeing none. Minutes of other boards, anybody want to discuss any of those?
I would just like to make a note, if anyone's reading the Peters Creek sanitary minutes, you might notice that there are a number of developments coming up in Nottingham and Union, and including the Mineral Beach property at some point, and I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, because I do feel that development of that type is going to add traffic to the Peters Township roads, and I think perhaps we need to be looking ahead for possible ways to help mitigate some of that. I don't know that we can avoid having people come through, but perhaps we can look at the road plan and see where we need to really actively look at expanding these turning lanes or something along those lines. Thank you.
Be miscellaneous.
We have good news today. We finally officially have all of our permits for rolling. Good news today, we finally officially have all of our permits for Rolling Hills Drive, so work on that. That project is going to begin in earnest this week. One of the things that we had talked about was the possibility of installing signs at the intersection of East McMurray Road and Rolling Hills Drive, as well as Rolling Hills Drive and Senator Church Road. The architect has come up with a couple different designs for these signs. Luckily, everyone's seated. The cost, and up on the upper end, there would be a single sign that would be shared by both the township and the school district and Senator Church, because they can't accommodate two signs. But our share of this would be in the vicinity of $60,000 to $65,000. Now, the thing to keep in mind, I think, with regard to that, is that if you look at this as a share of the cost of this project, this is going to be very small. It doesn't represent, it represents a fraction of a percent of the high school project, and it doesn't represent 1% of what we'll spend in Rolling Hills Park. I do think it would be valuable to be able to, particularly at the East McMurray intersection, to create some sense that you're entering a special space that should cause you to travel through that space differently than you might otherwise. And I think this is the best way to do that. I think the other thing is, quite frankly, the school district and municipality are creating this very valuable new asset, and we should showcase that.
I 100% agree.
Yep, Paul, I'll even go further. I'll donate $1,000 of my own money toward the fund to get these built, and I would encourage other people to do that, too. We heard the school district being a big no when we were in our joint session.
Well, but I should tell you that I think that's, in talking to Dr. French, and I don't know this far back, but in talking to Dr. French, she thinks that the school district's take on this has changed, in that they're supportive of this project. They have seen these designs, they haven't, I've just recently got the proposed cost of them, so. My intention would be to incorporate the construction of these into the construction of the buildings in Rolling Hills Park, because I think, quite frankly, we might do better on price. We can look at the possibility of doing these as a change order in the school project, but that process always scares the daylights out of me, but, you know, there's no harm in asking what it would cost, so.
It was ludicrous that they were going to only put one sign up by the school. That's, it makes no sense.
So is that $65,000 per sign, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying our share of, there would be, at the East McMurray entrance, there would be, you know, a pair of signs.
Right.
Yeah.
And then when you go up to the upper area, because the area falls off and there's not a place to put two signs, you would take one of these signs and adapt it so that it would indicate that it was both the high school and the park. So there'd be three signs constructed.
Can there be signage on the light to park, high school?
Yeah, there'll be a street.
Put that up as part of the light?
I would think that we would have something, but I mean, that isn't what the purpose of this is.
But the marquee.
That's a totally different purpose.
But the marquee for the high school is still going to be up Rolling Hills Drive.
Actually, their intention at this point, I think, is to abandon the marquee and substitute this in its place.
Yeah, I think that's a, I mean, aesthetically, it sets off the drive. It's rather than just another piece of asphalt heading up the hill, it's a very attractive entrance way. And I think considering what we're spending on the whole structure, I think making it as attractive as possible is much to our advantage.
I would agree.
For that being said, I agree with the sign. I think this sort of a design is very nice. But I'd like to know, is this going to be lit? Is this just VersaLock? Okay, because it, to be honest with you, $65,000 each seems like a lot of money to me, because VersaLock block doesn't cost that much money, and I don't know how big it is or whether it's lit. That's why I'm asking for a little bit more detail.
Well, I think these are actually upper structure, isn't it?
So you said that was an upper-end estimate for our half of three signs, so.
Well, that's, what I mean, so that's a realistic estimate, and we'll know what the real.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's 180.
Well, I think we need some options.
Typically, we, the bids come in much lower than what they. Yeah, I mean.
I wonder if there's an opportunity to do what St. Benedict's has on the walkway to go into the church, if you could have, like, names that would be in this bridge, so you could see from the road until they're on top of them.
I just said I put $1,000 bucks, and you could do something like that, recognize contributions.
Yeah.
I think that would be a big way to help.
That's a good idea. Yes, that's great, but I think that we're, you know, rather than trying to nickel-and-dime a thing like this, we need to, we need to get a very nice entrance to that place, and if it costs some money, it costs some money. And we'll figure out how to finance it, and donations do it great.
Well, I agree that we don't want to nick one dime. I do think we need to be cost-conscious.
We're always cost-conscious.
We're just going through a situation where we're not sure what our revenue's going to be.
That's fine.
It's not like we're approving it today.
No, I know, I know that.
Well, what you're approving is this concept, and then we're going to go ahead and design.
Go get some numbers and designs and see what we have.
So if you're comfortable with this, I've got to run this by the school district, and then we'll move forward.
Do anything you want, as long as it looks like the one on the bottom right.
I think a big advantage, is it something like this?
Which one do you like?
The one on the bottom right.
Yeah. So you and I share a share of common taste. I don't know that this is what others think.
I don't like the ones with the fences, but I would like, you know.
I don't care, whatever, come on, let's go.
But I think signs like this at the entrance will discourage it from becoming a through-traffic cut.
Right. That's right, it's like an interest, we, you know, we're requiring monuments and so forth for housing development, so this is our development.
Absolutely.
You're done with the good news?
What's that?
You're done with the good news?
I'm done with good news, that's all the good news I have.
Will you afford recognition under miscellaneous?
Oh, I do, yes. You know, last year, what we did, we did not have an event, and I don't think you could have an event this year. I think we ought to attempt to do as we did last year, is to send out.
Gift cards.
Thank you, and include in it a gift certificate for local Peters Township businesses, or a local Peters Township farm, for that matter. And I think that that was extremely well-received last year.
It was. I agree.
Well, I think that the council people going to the meetings actually made.
Oh, I think that.
Was it important, and I think we should do that again.
I would agree.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
I had a question, if you don't mind. Could, since Mr. Chief McLaughlin is still here, what about the fire captains? Can you give us an update on the status of those?
Shlager, you're going? Yeah, yeah. Included in our report for the month of May will be the promotion of three fire captains. After a long time of writing job descriptions and posting, advertising within, and doing all of that stuff, we've made three promotions. We've promoted Captain Chris Chiprich, Captain Chris Barton, and Captain Tim Frazier. It was our intention to introduce them to council, much like we have in the past, and we still will do that. It's important for me to let them have their moment. This is a big deal for the department. But we're also going to recognize the lieutenants that we promoted as well, within the volunteer ranks. So when we have a date appropriate for that or a venue appropriate for that, that's something that we're working on, to be able to introduce them to you, so you can see their faces. But in the meantime, in our May report will be pictures of all of them, with a brief description of their background and what they already brought to our community, but now in a new capacity.
Thank you.
Just as a general note, Mr. Lauer, I think when, whenever we have significant promotions in our departments, whether it's police or fire or buildings and grounds, I think it's very nice to bring them here and introduce them to council. I mean, I like seeing these people, and I'm sure it means something to them.
I think it is a nice, it gives.
Well, that was the, that's always been the intent, but we, our meetings are, they were great.
I know, it's hard now, but I mean, it's, you know, since we started really introducing the, you know, like the police and the fire promotions, it's been, it's a nice thing, and to do it with a little bit of pomp and circumstance, if it warrants it, it's nice. Okay, let's see, anything miscellaneous?
Two more positive things for miscellaneous.
I'd like to compliment Tom Gromick, Ryan Bonney, and Kelsey, before she went on furlough, for keeping all the communications updated, the websites, the cable channel, putting all that information on, to try to make sure our residents had the latest and greatest news. So I think that was a good effort, and it may be complimented. And one other thing I'd like to compliment, this past Thursday, the South Hills Children's Choir staged an outdoor concert at Paramount for the residents. They were out in the parking lot, and the residents were in the windows with the windows open, and it was a really, really nice event. Harry was there, and I just wanted to compliment them on that initiative, because it was a really kind of a ray of sunshine, even though the weather was.
Yeah, it started, winds started blowing, it looked like wood stuck with them getting the speakers.
Seriously. Which is two, two positive things.
Great, great. Okay, next agenda, items?
I have two items. One, I'm going to ask about his status on Courtney and blocking the trail parking, unless you have an update now.
I do not have an update, but I will have an update for the next meeting. What I've noticed is that he no longer is blocking the bridge, and that now that parking lot's open, so.
When I drove by there the other day, he's got something taped off back there.
Oh, no, he has it taped off in the back, but for a while there, you couldn't even get across the bridge. So I do intend to talk to his report.
Really? And the other item was, and I don't know, I don't think we put it on the agenda, but I don't know, up to you, I was privy to an email that circulated to you, and I think, and about portageons on the construction sites.
You know, Ed and I, Ed and I talked about this, and we're not sure that this is a problem, but the one thing that, you know, Ed and I are going to do as a matter of course, because no one else has complained about this, we, if you had this problem with people urinating and defecating now in plans under development, we certainly would be getting telephone calls. We're going to be asking.
Paul, refresh me, I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't know if you were privy to that.
Not privy to the privy?
Well, that's exactly.
We're privy to the privy.
So someone put out an email complaining about the fact that there were portageons on the.
But we don't require portageons on the sites.
We don't require portageons.
Oh, okay.
But so.
Thank you, I was confused.
We're going to ask people going forward, when you have new construction, is how do you intend to handle this, so that we have an understanding? Because some developers actually put portageons out that are used by everybody in the plan.
Well, I just thought it was a good idea.
Oh, I know, I.
Not that any of that, the allegations is actually happening, but, I mean, it makes sense that if you have a job site, there's no place to go.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't believe they're getting in their car and driving, you know.
Like the hospital burnt down on Windermere, you know, there's a portageon there.
And I would expect to see that there. And, but I don't know that you need one for every house that's being constructed in the new plan.
No, 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 but I think in the plan, there should be.
Is it very primitive of all for portageons?
What's that?
Do we have any kind of permitting for portageons at all?
No.
It's not nice to do the low pass of all our county, all those townships, we would have to get a permit to have the portageons, we'd have to submit pumping receipts. It seems like, you know, they're kind of like country towns, and they're more advanced on portageons than we are currently.
Well, they may have a regulation we don't have, but I don't know that there's any.
I'm not saying we need one, I'm just saying, I think it might not be a bad idea to just at least require one.
Yeah, that's right.
Not if they're building one house and, you know, but, you know, you're going to build 50, 60 lots, or 40 lots, or whatever it is, you should have something, some facilities there for the workers.
And again, what we're going to do is ask people how they're accommodating this, so that we understand that there is an accommodation.
Thank you.
I got two things. One, you and I talked on the phone about the limited maintenance roads off of Maplewood, and we're going to put that on.
Well, what, you know, that, when we were, when we were ready to do the road tour that got canceled, one of the things that was going to be on that are these minimum maintenance roads that are remaining years ago, many, many years ago. Council took over roads with the understanding that those roads would be maintained forever in the condition in which they were, they were received. And over the years, we have improved the number of those roads and required residents to contribute to those, to those improvements. Over the years, the amount that residents have contributed kept getting smaller and smaller, because we had, it's to our advantage to upgrade them. But I think at this point, you know, these remaining roads have probably been in this status for 40 years at this point, or maybe even longer, and at some point in time, I think the township just ought to bite the bullet and allow us to go in and make them part of the road paving program and improve them.
They're really bad.
They're difficult to maintain.
What are all those two roads? I just walked them, I don't know.
Laurel? Laurel? Laurel?
Yeah, Laurel.
Yeah. What's the other one that's up on that? Maplewood, Laurel?
Yes.
Pine Wood?
Yeah, the top of Pine Wood.
Pine Wood.
Top of Pine Wood.
Longview is also a street that's.
Yeah, okay, well, as long as we're.
Oh, it's going to be part of the budget discussion this fall.
Because they're really bad.
Yes, they are. And to go in and chip them is kind of silly.
And the second thing is, you know, we talked about the no doubles on the tennis center, I got a lot of, I got a couple of calls on that.
The tennis center will be open and be set to go.
They couldn't understand why doubles was any worse than singles, but.
Social distancing.
I don't, I'm not a tennis person, so I wouldn't know. And then finally, the nice big sign you put there that doubles weren't allowed, can we get that same sign company to put a big sign at the parking lot at Thomas and East McMurray Road? Because people jam into that parking lot, and there's so much parking available when Peters would park, it makes no, it makes no sense to me, when you would illegally park all over the place, where you can drive a half a mile, and there's 100 parking spaces.
Hundreds of parking spaces.
My big disadvantage is you got to pedal back.
Some of them are more convenient to the trail than that one. So we need a sign. There's plenty of parking at Peterswood Park.
All you can do is just close that lot for a month and a half. People will have to park, and oh, this is a lot more easy.
And one of the things we're going to do this summer is expand the parking lot down at Palapet, so that there'll be a lot more parking down there.
We have an outback there.
We also have a lot of blocks down there now.
Believe me, I know where they all are.
There's also a lot of construction material down at Palapet, so unless.
To a certain age is an important consideration.
It's actually down there, because we are, we're going to use it to do bank stabilization there.
So that's using spaces, though.
All right.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.